You see the little audio bar moving though, don't you?
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is Monday, August 25th, 2025, and this is a special meeting for the TELCITY Comic Council. Everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. Before we do adoption of the agenda, I do have a couple additions I'd like to add. If we could, under Adoption Agenda, I'd like to do kind of Mayor Comments section there before the public hearing. It might help answer some questions that some people may have and clear up a few things. And then, under New Business, under Item B, Dispatch, Joint Meeting Date. So...
Motion to adopt with change.
Motion by Gerald, their second.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any further discussion? All in favor? Sigurup saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, that moves on to Mayor Comments. So, I know a lot of people have interest in this wheel tax and try doing the best I can to research it and understand it better and help explain it. I'm gonna kind of start a little bit at the beginning of how it all came about, clear back into the eighties, so bear with me. Hope everybody's... And I won't dwell on that, but... So, I just want to kind of go with it. The county adopted a wheel tax back in, or took effect back in 1982. It's been in place since. It was amended back in 2014. From what I understand, it was mainly towards like mopeds and scooters when they had license required for those. And I think there might have been another change additionally. But since that time, of course, you have two taxes. You have a wheel tax and a surtax. You only get taxed if you have one vehicle, like if you have just a normal sedan, normal car that most people probably have. You don't pay the wheel tax and surtax. You pay one of those, out of those two, if you may. One out of, one out of the bucket, we'll call it, or one out of that. So, you don't pay a wheel tax and a surtax. Surtax is just different categories for the different types of vehicles, with the weights and classifications, if that makes any sense. But combined, in 2024, now, I'm just gonna use that as an example for most of this because it was a full, complete year. If I do '25, it's only, you know, a little over half a year, and I don't want to misqu any of it. So, 2024, Perry County in a whole collected, for them, for the county, not city and Troy and Cannleton included in that, but collected $273,000 and some change. TELCITY collected $52,000, Cannleton collected 13, and Troy collected $3,000. This, this is for FYI, people kind of haven't needed what this means. Now, what kind of funding sources does the city use when it comes to repairing streets, paving some alleys maybe here and there, and use for community crossings for grants? We have, basically, we call four different, well, we have more than four, but four options, specifically.
Primary options.
Primary options, yes. One is the wheel and surtax, which we, we saw that we got in '24 around $52,000. Another's your local road and street, which in '24 was, we'll say $63,000, just rounding up. And then you have your motor vehicle highway, your MVH. You might hear that from time to time. That was $143,447. And then you have your motor vehicle highway restricted, MVH, I call it dash R. That's $143,447 as well. Now, with restricted, you can only do basically paving with it. You can't pay salaries out of it. Is that right, Connie?
How about the restricted?
You cannot pay salaries, but like, like the street commissioner, maybe some of the street employees could be getting paid out of some of the motor vehicle highway, the MVH. So, you can't add all those together and say, wow, you've got that much, what are you using it for?
Remember, before you go on?
Yep.
You included alleys in your statement.
Yeah, you can use some of these, these funds to do some alleys, but not community crossings.
We've also used general funds to pave alleys.
Correct. General, yeah.
And possibly edit funds?
Correct. We have used edit funds and general funds when it comes to applying for community crossings grants or any other maintenance that may be needed at that time. So, lane miles. I don't have Cannletons and Troy's, I was able to get the counties. The county has 969 lane miles. TELCITY has 103 lane miles. Like I said, counties don't have any, and it's, it's all gonna make sense hopefully at the end when I get to it. So, as we look at this lane mile direct distribution, and it's a little bit ahead with this wheel tax, because I kind of got, that's how I put this together. In order for the city, any unit or municipality or town, whatever, over 5,000, if they adopt a wheel and surtax, they are, that makes them eligible to receive this lane mile direct distribution fund, starting in 2027. Now, these are all estimated numbers because it all, you know, they put all this money in a, in a pot or in a fund. If not all municipalities adopt a wheel surtax or so forth, that, that shifts numbers around, okay?
If you don't?
If you don't, yeah. It depends on the counties and cities, how many participate in it or have that tax, is how that will end up getting, you know, if everybody does it, that's less money, but...
If you don't have a wheel tax or excise tax, then you can't get those money.
That's correct. You're ineligible for those funds. Now, this is different from community crossings. I'll touch on that next. But it's estimated with 103 lane miles that TELCITY has would receive, and this isn't the tax part that we're gonna, they're wanting to look at adopting tonight, this is the actual we receive. $118,000 to $159,000, the city would receive an additional funding by implementing the tax that makes us eligible for those funds. The county would receive...
That hurt me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but that's assuming we adopt this tonight.
That's correct. Well, no, not, you could actually adopt this in October, June of next year maybe even...
No, it wouldn't go into effect until later.
Right, but these funds aren't available until '27. The first distribution of these funds won't be until '27.
That's your lane tax.
Yes, your lane tax.
Your lane tax.
Disco year '27, which starts July 1st, '26.
Right, but the first distribution won't be until '27. That's what they tell me.
So, I'm questioning whether if the tax isn't adopted tonight, that first year, I don't believe we're eligible for that distribution.
Every, every webinar I've watched said we would be eligible.
The lane tax.
If we did it next year.
The lane tax.
We still would.
Yeah.
You'd be collecting the funds but not receiving the extra distribution through the lane distribution, not the...
The lane distribution, sorry.
You'd still get your, the wheel tax portion.
That's not my understanding.
Okay. I'll pull, I've got a PowerPoint here that I can pull up. But like in the county's case, they've received 1.1 to 1.5 million. Now, Cannleton, Troy, because they're under 5,000, received $0 of the lane distribution funds. They get nothing. Okay? So, only 55 counties and 16 cities and towns have a wheel and surtax as of maybe a month ago. Now, have any adopted it since then? I'm not 100% sure, so that may be off some.
Logically, they would have, it's just that the law was passed, keeping money from us, and in order to get some of the money back, we have to have an excise and wheel tax.
Potentially, but I have maybe a solution for that. So, so the wheel and surtax, allowable expenses, so back on the tax part now. Construct, reconstruct, repair, maintain streets and roads, and you can use those funds to go after community crossings if you want. The lane mile direct distribution. To receive these funds, local units must adopt a wheel and surtax. This distribution is only available to local units of a population of 5,000 or more that are eligible to adopt a wheel and surtax. This will impact the maximum community crossings match now. This is what a lot of people have been told, or at least I feel like they have, for eligible units. So, an estimated $190 million to $225 million will be available for this distribution with the anticipated date being June 30th of 2027. These amounts distributed will vary based on available funds and the numbers of eligible units that have adopted the wheel and surtax. It is important to note that TELCITY, if TELCITY does not adopt a wheel tax, we will not receive any of these additional distributed lane mile funds. So, in this scenario, only Perry County will receive these funds for the county roads based on their 969 miles. The lane miles for TELCITY, Cannleton, and Troy would not be included in that figure. Because that was a question somebody asked, if the counties got one in place and they get a, they, will they, that distribution cannot be filtered down to the municipalities through that, and they said no. Because that was a good question I had. All right, so now, let's talk about community crossings. A lot of people have talked about it, I saw in some social media posts that someone shared with me. So, from 2016 to 2025, TELCITY has been awarded close to $6.7 million through that program. That's, and that's great. That's what's helped made our streets that we're doing. So, our contributions towards these paving efforts amount to about 1.92 million, 1.9 to $2 million, which is approximately 27% of the total awarded funds. So, this averages around about $200,000 a year. What TELCITY puts in to go in for community crossings, okay, on average out. I know when people start figuring this math, they're like, that don't add up, but...
I know, caller.
In 20, when community crossings first started around 2016, the match required for community crossings was 50/50. So, when you start putting that in that math, it's gonna throw it off. Then it's, it's 25/75, and now, coming up, it's gonna be 20/80 come this fall for the October. So, that changes it up. The maximum amount to apply for, at one time was a million, then it went to a million and a half, now it's down to a million. So, there's a lot of changes in those numbers, so when you start adding them up, they don't add up right. I've written up a formula that kind of explains it. All right, so, community crossings. You're only able to apply for streets that are part of your inventory through EndUp, and that's what I was saying, the 103,000, 103 miles, that's all ties in. So, TELCITY, moving forward, is only eligible to apply for up to $1 million with a 20% match. Now, people ask about alleys, and I've tried to state this, they are ineligible for community crossings. There are some cases where an alley could be considered a street where there's no other access to their home. Those are pretty much the exception, and that's, that's it.
If they're part of our inventory.
Yeah. Now, TELCITY can still apply to community crossings without adopting this wheel surtax, 100%, okay? However, if TELCITY adopts this wheel and surtax, any additional funds received through the lane mile distribution will be subtracted from the eligible funds of community crossings. For example, if TELCITY receives an additional, let's say, $100,000 from the lane mile distribution, we would only be able to apply for $900,000 of community crossings. So, that was just simple math there, trying to explain it. Where do we go from here? And these are my opinions only, this does not reflect the council's opinions. They have their own, and I'm sure we'll hear those in a minute. First is you could adopt a wheel and surtax at the minimum rates. This would make TELCITY eligible for additional lane mile distribute, direct distribution funds. Another option, adopt the wheel and surtax at the minimum rate but delay the implementation. We could implement the tax rate at a later date, aligning with the deadline for receiving the lane mile direct distribution fund, which we talked about earlier. Next option, do not adopt any tax rate at this time. Instead, we could work with state legislators to explore alternatives to avoid taxing residents twice, as some feel. So, option one, and this is just working with legislators, so there would have to be changes in the legislators, in the laws to do this. Counter remove the wheel and surtax for TELCITY residents only. TELCITY could then adopt its own tax rate at the minimum rate, which is the same as the county's current rate. This approach would not impact residents financially and would make TELCITY eligible for the lane mile distribution funds. Meaning, if the county's currently charging you 750, and we're allowed to adopt our own, and they can't, and theirs wouldn't be taxed on to the TELCITY residents in this, in our area, in the corporate limits, TELCITY could do 750, you're not paying any more than what you're paying to the county, you know, it's a city, which you're only paying it once.
Exact same payment, just moving where it is in the ledger. Everybody's already...
Right, and it makes us eligible for those additional funds.
Yeah.
That would be great, right?
But that would take a change in legislation.
It would. And then, now, your second option, and I think is the most logic because it helps out Troy and Cannleton. Work with state legislators to exempt units over 5,000 from adopting the wheel and surtax if the county already has one in place. The state could then distribute the lane mile distribution funds through the county, and the county could distribute those funds to each unit based on their lane miles. If they did that, that means Cannleton and Troy and TELCITY would get their distribution of lane mile funds without having to any additional taxes. So, what you're paying today is what you'd pay tomorrow, and all of our entities, the counties, this Troy, Cannleton, would get that additional fund. That would be a win for everybody. So, hang on. So, now, someone asked, what has TELCITY done to help maintain our roads? We've recently sent eight employees, including myself, to a pager workshop. They're now certified to upgrade, to grade our roads in-house, which will save the taxpayers' money. We've developed a comprehensive pavement management plan. We have implemented sealing streets to preserve our streets from deteriorating, thereby extending their lifespan. You know, I feel we are very proactive in paving efforts, anticipating that there might be a time when funds for grants or repaving might not be readily available. This allows us to focus on ongoing maintenance rather than repaving full streets, and that's where that ceiling comes from. You've probably seen some streets sealed, which people seal parking lots, you seal driveways, and that will help extend life of the street, and you don't have to go out and pave it all the time. So, that's kind of my thoughts on all that. I've probably confused some of you with it, that's a lot to take in, I understand. There's a lot here. Any comments on that can be addressed probably under the public hearing side of it, and when we get, when we're getting out here shortly, we ask that you come up to the microphone, state your name and address, the minutes, please, so that anybody streaming or watching this live can hear it. Before we move on to that, council, do you guys have any questions for me on this? And we can talk, if you get some later, it comes there, or we can discuss it under New Business again. It doesn't matter. That's before, now or later, it's whichever. Okay?
I do have some comments, but I'll say them from later.
Okay, that's fair. All right, so, next part on our agenda is the public hearing. So, is there a motion to suspend the meeting for the public hearing, and then we'll reconvene after that?
Motion.
This is motioned by Brian.
Second.
Second by Gerald. All in favor? Sigurup saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next is a public hearing. Thank you all for being here. I'm glad to see people here, and I welcome you all. So, if anybody would like to speak, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. One at a time, I'm sure we can all figure that out. Try to limit your conversations, if you can, to some degree, and be respectful, which I think you all will be, so I have no, no doubt. You can hear us, right, Greg, I hope?
I can hear you. I'm taking it out so I don't have an echo, because I'm hearing you twice.
There you go. So, I'm just gonna do math, because I... State your name for...
Oh, I'm sorry. I understand. Greg Jarbo, TELCITY, Indiana, 739 17th Street.
Thank you.
So, if I followed the math, basically, if you got 100,000s from the lane improvement, you adopt the tax, you get the 100,000 from the lanes, right?
From the extra distribution.
Lane miles. Yes. Okay, that takes away from your community crossings.
That's correct.
So, really, the only thing you're saving is your 20% match, which would be $20,000.
In essence, that's, it's like it's the new math formula. But we are also getting whatever the wheel surtax is too. That could be anywhere from 50 some odd thousand on up to, I don't know the top of my head, the maximum right now, I'm not looking at it, but yes. Roughly. Okay, so you're talking roughly 20 to 70,000, somewhere in that range.
Well, it, well, no, it depends on what it is. It could be more than that, yeah. What's the wheel tax give you? How much, do you have?
The wheel tax, the minimum, 750 on one and five on the others, the minimum up to 25 and 40, I think?
I think the minimum, though.
Is that right? Okay.
Do you know how many you're paying, currently paying on the county?
That's the question, I guess. So, that's your math.
Yeah, well, currently, the county, the minimum that we receive from the county in 2024?
Yeah.
We probably get somewhere around 50 to 56,000, if you do the minimum.
That's why I did the 20 to 70, somewhere in that range. Because you get 20,000 for the match and roughly 50 from the tax. So, okay.
Well, if we adopted the minimum excise or the surtax and the wheel tax, from my understanding, if we adopt one, we have to adopt both.
That's correct, because they're disrelated. All those are different types of vehicles. I don't like how that was done.
Wheel tax is commercial vehicles. View it this way, the wheel tax is commercial vehicles, and the surtax is personal vehicles.
If you do the minimum, which is 750 or five, the projected tax is generated, I had that figured somewhere.
Is that the 59, about 60,000?
Yeah, roughly 60,000 on the minimum, 209,000 on the maximum.
Okay, so the maximum's quite a bit more, but the, the minimum is still in that 20 to 70, because you got 20,000 from match, and let's say 60,000, so 20 to 80.
Right. But you bring up a good point with community crossings, though, Greg. Community crossings is not guaranteed money. That's competitive.
I, I get that.
That's competitive.
I get that.
No guarantee that that money will be...
Well, and while that pot has been reduced from 280 million down to only 100 million, counties like Perry County would be ineligible to apply based off these, you know, 100, if they're gonna get 100 to 101 million, estimated, don't, these are all estimated. They're, and the max is a million, they wouldn't be able to apply for. It would kick out a lot of people being able to apply for community crossings. Follow me? I know it's confusing.
I understand it.
Okay.
But it's still competitive.
It is competitive.
But the line is, we don't control it. The city doesn't control it.
I agree.
It's true.
We don't. Not going to have a little competition around them, though. I'm saying. Makes you work for it. All right, Cindy, you had to raise your hand earlier, did you want to come up? And Pat, you're not shy, are you?
No.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
Cindy Taylor, 1245 10th Street. I have to think of my address. Good question just came up. Per wheel, four wheels per vehicle?
No, it's...
Per vehicle?
It's just type of vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Glad I answered that.
I know that, and I will, it does, I can understand why people feel that way. I don't know why they call it that.
I thought it was a per vehicle, so I just wanted to ask that. My question would be, because this has been, I think, two or three weeks since your meeting.
Probably, yeah.
So, has, has the books been looked at and tried to find another way to cut money to help in this area? That would be my first question.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly kind of what I was talking about earlier, you know, I was talking about the, the funding. Personally, I feel we're okay with our paving dollars, what we have.
Right now?
I mean, I would love those. Who wouldn't like to have more if you can, but I don't think we need it.
Exactly, yeah.
I think we're doing okay in a lot of ways. I don't mind cutting stuff if we have to at times. Depends on, I mean, it, it's like your own, anybody in their life in their household.
Exactly, yeah.
So, it doesn't bother me. But as far as, you know, looking for ways to save money, that's where I was talking about sealing streets, stuff like that. I mean, I know that's not quite what you meant, but it's along that line of stretching your dollar further, rather than going to pave a street every 10, 15 years. If I can get 30 years by sealing it, it's a lot cheaper and it's way to do it.
Have, is, is it counterintuitive to do what you're thinking about or maybe doing by cutting out on your community crossings to add this, to get another tax? I mean, that's...
You bring up the, when I've been reading over all this, Cindy, you're exactly right. It's, it's a lot of confusing math on a board, honestly, to try to figure out which is the best way to move it all around to make sense.
And I've got a lot of questions, but my main thing would be, is, is there any harm? What will you lose if you should wait even one year? Say, July of 2026, go back and look at this, and...
I can say exactly what you'd lose. Maybe 60,000? Maybe. That's if you adopt the minimum. Because all you're gonna lose is the wheel and surtax.
Well, you're not losing anything you don't already have, though.
Exactly. That's what, you're exactly right. That, I thought the same thing.
60,000 was a lot of money.
It is.
We spent 48,000 to, to fund the animal shelter.
Right, so 60,000 would pave a little over a block when it comes, I mean, it's, we have white streets, duh. I mean, it's expensive, unfortunately. I mean, you kind of get what you got, that, but, no, I mean, that's about what we would lose, because it's my understanding, like I said, you don't have to implement this at this point in order to receive those lane distributions, that comes a little bit later, but some communities are going ahead and doing it. The only benefit is, you get that tax that one year, but you don't receive any additional lane distributions, to my knowledge. That's the only, I mean, again, you're not losing, you don't already get it.
Has, has anybody on you as the mayor, or anybody on the council, because we're always all about communication, contacted the county, either the council or commissioners, and said, we need more money here for our streets? Can this money, can this tax possibly be risen a little bit for, and I might be, have hatchets behind me, but I mean, they've already got it.
No, you, you bring up a good point. No, I have not had those discussions. Kind of, some of this research, I've been digging deeper into trying to figure out the best solution, kind of came about in the middle of last week, and I have not reached out to him. The only bad thing, if the county raises theirs from, say, 750 to $9, that's, it's gonna, it's give us a little bit more on the tax, but we still wouldn't get that lane distribution fund.
See, that's what, I, I want to investigate that more. That's why I'm begging to make...
Yeah, I'll give you a PowerPoint. Hey, I'll, I'm glad to tell it.
Yeah, because that don't make sense, because you're already basically paying it through your citizens.
Right.
And you're getting it. So, it doesn't make sense how they can, you know...
I wish if the county, if they, if your county had it adopted, that should allow those funds to distribute right through the county like it already was doing, and none of us would be up here, TELCITY, Troy, and Cannleton received their extra lane mile distribution. Well, they actually, they, Cannleton and Troy were simply getting nothing, and that's not fair. Cannleton needs it, too. I'm not the mayor of Cannleton, but I understand they need help, too, and so does Troy. They're both great communities, good people. But if, if we could get legislative change, and now, all of you in this room, that would be helpful to talk to your state legislators. If they could change it where, if your county has it adopted, that's good enough, you get your distribution, we would have to implement nothing, and we'd still get a good fund. That would be a win.
So, we have two votes out of 150.
Well, there's, I guarantee you, once a lot of our communities start hearing about this and that option of the 55 that have it, that's a win for them. You're not paying anymore, and we're getting a benefit of it, and that's awesome.
Cindy brought it up, and I know it's later on the agenda, but it's after we get done with the discussion.
What?
I think it's pertinent about asking the county to do something.
Well, she was asking to ra, consider raising that tax, at least talk to them about it. Explain it.
Yeah, just...
Well, I think it's pertinent in the discussion to report, and we're gonna talk Well, I think it's pertinent in the discussion to report, and we're gonna talk about this item B, I guess, under new business. But the dispatch budget, okay, that, uh, the county never did approve the agreement for the twenty twenty-five dispatch budget. And, uh, we had a meeting with them, a joint meeting, I believe, in August of twenty-four, I believe.
September-ish, it's in, well, I've got a long, you know, you want to do it, but.
And we have been billing, the, the dispatch center is, statutorily, the county responsible, but the city, Tell City operates the dispatch center, uh, under a contract with the county, the cooperative agreement. And, uh, we have been submitting, Portrasor's been submitting billings monthly to the county, uh, for the operation of the dispatch center. And through the month of June, the county has reimbursed the city three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars out of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that they've been billed. So, they have shorted the city of Tell City a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars through the month of June.
Can I comment? My name is Cindy Taylor, I live at twelve forty-five Tenth Street. I am a normal citizen, I am not on the council, I am not a commissioner, and I don't know how that applies to this.
How it applies to this is, we're gonna request money from the county for their wheel tax when they won't meet their obligation under the dispatch center.
Oh, no, I think, that is, I didn't ask you to request money, I asked you, have you spoken to them about possibly, and if that would change the numbers for you all to help your dollars go up? That was my thing there.
If you change the legislation, they may have a choice.
Yeah, if you, but the best thing is, legislator would change, if the county has, if, of the fifty-two counties that currently have it in place, and many others that join in, if they wouldn't require municipalities over five thousand to implement an additional wheel tax, this wouldn't be a problem for any of us. We would already have the wheel tax in place, at what the rate is currently in the county, and we would get that extra hundred and some odd thousand dollars, we'll have to lift a finger and do another thing.
Well, and then we vote you all in, every one of you, so.
Put a lot of thought into this, to figure it out, and that's logic, to me, the thing to do.
But, and wait a year. That's, that's what I'm asking as one citizen, hopefully speaking for a lot of citizens, that.
Well.
I mean, sixty thousand is a lot to lose as a city.
Yeah.
A hundred to two hundred is a lot for one homeowner to lose, per year, so.
Well, if you have one vehicle, it's seven fifty.
How many have one vehicle?
Yeah, and I know, but I'm just, two hundred might be a little more than, but, yeah.
I said one to two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's at a hundred if you go that max right away.
Uh, the, well, yeah, if it's twenty-five times four, yeah, I guess that would.
And I've got five, so.
You have a vote, don't you, for camp?
Yeah.
Those are a little more.
And will that go over the weight, and are you gonna hit me up with that big one?
Yeah, I, I don't know on that. I, I don't know what, I, I don't know camper from one from the other, so. Uh, but I mean, I'm, let's, I'm, our goal, or my goal is, to get Tell City this amount, the max amount of dollars that we can in this community without making little to no impact on our residents in any way.
Well, you broke the numbers down in dollar amount. How is that broke down?
In which part?
Yeah, how the county, what you get out of what is paid in now.
I, it's, I think it's based off your lane model.
So, you're already getting, you're, you're getting fifty-two, you said?
Fifty-two thousand.
So, by implementing the minimum, you're going to get.
An additional fifty-two-ish, maybe fifty, yeah.
By double taxing, okay. That's, that is where I have the problem.
And that's what I'm trying to get with the legislators, if we already have it in place through the county, we won't have to, we wouldn't have to even think about doing this. We'd be good to go, and get that extra funds. To me, that's the most logic.
Just as one person, I'm asking for you to hold this off six months to a year, and go at the legislatures, do something, figure out a different way.
I will ask her, hopefully, many, all of you in this room and anybody watching it, if that's the route we end up going, or, I would hope you all would help support us, support me, and support this council. Call your legislators. And pushing legislators to take that consideration, to get more funding without taxing you guys again. If that could happen, thank you all for helping, that'd be great, and we all walk away winners.
And it sounds like.
We can pay valleys then with that, that, that extra money, it said, that lane model distribution, I think you can pay valleys with it.
Pay what?
Pay valleys. We don't get community costs, we pay valleys. This is kind of a laughing, not a laughing joke, but, but, yeah.
I didn't see that listed.
What? I thought, I thought you could, for an extra, well, I thought you could. Thank you, Cindy.
I think it's the roads and streets.
Oh, well, there may be a, uh, okay, if I'm wrong, I'm sorry.
How you doing? I'm Lance Galindo, eleven thirty-five Nineteenth Street, Tell City. And I'll speak for anyone, everyone else. We don't wanna pay any new taxes. We're hardworking citizens, we're barely getting by as it is, we're overtaxed. At the end of the month, I gotta figure out how to pay my bills and pay them. That being said, keeping whatever taxes we have, unfortunately, I don't even wanna keep those, but we have to keep them. Figure out how to pay, how to pay the bills and fix it. We don't wanna pay any more taxes, we're overtaxed. There's, we have nowhere money to give you, you took it all.
I agree with you.
We, we have not caught up with inflation, there's nowhere money to take from those citizens, you know? We're done, we ain't got no more.
Some of that is beyond our control, too.
Well, it's beyond our control financially, you're trying to tax us, to death.
About inflation, that is probably.
It's beyond your control.
That's what I mean.
Us citizens here in Tell City, we don't have no more to give you, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm trying to get you to do, give them more, so.
Figure out, you know, we might, we might have to skip things, and that's just the way it is. Cause in our household, we gotta skip things, and that's just the way it is. So.
That's what I was saying.
Vote you guys in, figure out how to do what you got, we ain't giving you no more, we don't want to, we give you enough. Lot, a lot of residents are leaving because just, it's just too high to live here. I love this town, it's a great community. And I know we need to fix things, but we ain't got it right now. So, I'm just gonna keep it short, and I'm, I'm speaking from my heart, and a lot of people here in this town are, are feeling the same way, okay? We just don't have it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
I knew Pat was coming. No, hey, I, you, hey, we, it's, you're good to come up, glad to see you.
I'm trying to stay here, but it makes me nervous. Pat, you're fourteen thirty-eight nineteenth. I'm gonna reiterate what Lance just said, we're poor people, you're just taxing, look within your own budget. If you need help, I'd be glad to help, because we cannot afford anymore. And, like Lance said, a lot of people are moving out, because they can't afford it. There's, it, it would be nice if our streets were lined with gold, but they're not. And we don't have the Rockefellers and all the rich people here anymore, so please, please vote this down on behalf of us taxpayers. Thank you.
You did good, Pat, thank you.
Hi, Judy.
I'm Judy Lance, I live at eleven forty-twelfth Street. If you pass this tax, and then we get the legislation changed, you gonna take the tax away?
Well, that's why I think it'd be, pump the brakes a little bit, could, if you delayed it a year, it gives us time to get the legislative change at least. I don't know if that makes any sense, but this all came to me this week, so I've not talked to the council even about this or shared my thoughts with anyone, cause I've been spending days and days and late nights.
I'm sure you have.
Educating myself, cause it's what I need to do, leave my job.
Also, legally speaking, if they, if they implement a tax, they can repeal a tax.
They can what?
If they implement a tax, they can repeal a tax, so that answers your question, I believe.
I know they can, but will they? That's, and that's a good distinction. This guy here won't, but that's beside the point. You. But anyhow, uh, also, I'd like to say that, uh, uh, we would like to know if, if sometime, instead of having public hearing, if we could hear the business part first, so, and you did part of that, that really helped.
I did that to try to, I hope that helped.
It did, it helped a lot. And, and I wanna thank you for that, because, you know, you come up and you, and you're stating what you think is correct, cause you've heard all, all this stuff, and then you find out it's not correct. And so, if we can hear it first and then let us talk, that would help. And, you know, unlike some of the others, you know, our, our gases went up, our waters went up, our, our electrics went up, our, and, and that's with you all, and, and then our groceries, it, it's, it's kinda rough, you know? And we always, always told everybody this was a good retirement town. It's changing. I mean, I, it's still better in a lot of big cities, but it is changing. And I would like to see it stay a, a good retirement town, where we can get people to come in and retire, come in and wanna live here and work, and not wanna go to Spencer County to live and stuff, so. I, you know, I understand we, we, you know, your need for money, I understand that too. But we also, like some of the others, we got both sides to the coin. And I'm really proud of you for looking for this other stuff and coming up with this. I'm really proud of you for that.
I promise I will work with legislators to try to get things changed, but I can't promise what they'll do.
Well, no, you can't do that, but you did give us another option, and we can contact our people.
Well, yeah, I gotta.
We'll be happy to put your legislators' phone numbers on the website.
That'd be nice, cause a lot of us burn, burn them up, so. And, you know, I just, I just like to see things quit raising, you know? Trash raised, water raises, electric raises. And I like our new ball field, but, you know, the electric company helped pay for that after we had our electric raised, so I'm just really.
Well, I'd be glad to sit down and discuss that further with you about some of that stuff, but.
But I'm, I really, I really like the new ball field. I do, I like it.
Thank you.
We wanna stick to the facts. There've been two comments made about people leaving the city. And Mayor, you can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but I thought the last population census that we did showed growth in the city of Tell City.
It is.
Is that correct?
It is.
Okay, so, we've had growth in the city of Tell City, that's fact.
Okay, and the growth is teenagers getting pregnant and stuff. Because you count your babies, another population, so you can't go off of that, because adults are leaving. You have people on welfare and stuff staying here, cause you guys give them free handouts.
We don't have any.
Who do we give free handouts to?
Any minor that has a kid, you guys give it to them.
The city does?
Not the city, not the city, but the county.
Yeah, we don't. City don't.
Well, my point is the same. They get a free ride, they get, pay for everything, you're leaving.
Can you come up to the microphone, please, so everybody can hear you, cause people watching, I don't want them to miss hearing it and be asking me later what to say. Well, let's try to, if you can, I'd like for us to stick to what we're here tonight.
Let's stick to the comments on the proposed ordinance.
I wasn't even meaning to bring that part up, but there's other ways of make, Kenneth Foster, ten forty-eight Sixteenth Street.
Thank you.
There's other ways of making tax money if we need it. I mean, you got Cruz and Maine going down there, there's a crowd of people down there. Put up food trucks and make tax money off that, make donations. I mean, even if you put, you know, there's been talk on their website of a burnout box. If you wanna put that up or charge ten dollars a burnout, take the money, put it in the road, implement.
I think our attorney may tell us not on that one, but.
It's a donation, just put a donation down there, you don't have to charge a fee.
No, with a legal, like, I don't, I don't like the liability issue, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, there's other options.
I understand.
And once you do implement this wheel tax and everything, or we don't come in here to vote on you raising it, or is it just gonna be willy-nilly, whenever you guys want to, you're gonna raise it?
No, there's still, there's still formalities, even if anyone.
Anytime there's a change to an ordinance that implements a tax, there has to be a public hearing.
Well, gee, I work sixty hours a week, I can't get off for every one of these meetings.
I understand.
And I appreciate.
So, I can't come up here and talk, this is actually the first meeting in five years I've been able to attend. I've been back to Tell City for five years, I grew up here all my life, I moved out of Tell City when I was eighteen, because I couldn't afford to live here. Thought I could come back and raise my family. I got my father-in-law from California to move out here. And ever since he's came out here, everything's went up through the roof, so he didn't improve any by coming out here.
What, what's everything?
Property tax, electric, water, trash, everything has went up. I mean, dramatically. My, my paycheck is the exact same as what it was back when I first started there twelve years ago, because of the amount of taxes that come out of my paycheck. I might as well not ever got a raise out there. I work literally, pretty much in hell. I work and melt, out of my pocket, in the iron, every day. I've got burns and scars all over my body to try to support my family. And every time I turn around, you guys try and tax me more. It kinda gets on my last nerve.
Well, I'm working to try to find different ways about doing it.
I mean, like I said, you got Cruz and Maine down there, you can have raffles or something to make extra money if you need to. I know it ain't an extravagant way of doing it, but there's other ways. You put this wheel tax in, and you know as well as I do, how long is it gonna be before you can actually get it out? Even if you guys agree to take it out, they ain't gonna take it out. You already got it implemented, they can get free money from us, they're gonna do it. I'm, I'm sorry, that's just the way it is, the way I've always seen it. It's, once there's a tax in, it don't ever come out.
If we went with a maximum amount, twenty-five dollars a year per vehicle?
I have three kids and a wife, every one of them drive. That's more money out of my pocket that I can't afford to be paying.
You're, you're affording three vehicles then, or?
I have five vehicles, cause there's five people in my house and every one of them drive. And then I got trailers, and then my dad's got farm and everything else, so, you know, that's all extra taxes.
So, yours would be a hundred and quarter a year?
Mine personally in my house, but you're not talking about the farm and all that either.
I'm just talking about the, if we went with the maximum tax, twenty-five dollars on your vehicles.
Yeah, but how long's that maximum gonna stay, that maximum?
The state set that maximum.
Yeah, but then, once they get something, it's never gonna come out, and then they'll just up it.
We were getting more money from the state, and they've decided not, we shouldn't have more money.
I'm just, I'm just saying, there's other options, I don't see implementing another tax, I just don't see it. It just don't make sense to me. Stuff that needs to be took care of ain't getting took care of, and you're wanting to implement a tax to take more money from us, that's still not gonna get took care of, because you've raised taxes before and the stuff's never not got took care of. There's potholes all the way down Nineteenth Street, there's new potholes on Tell Street you just paved. I mean.
Exactly, and, and the reason for that, and that's one of the things, I'll go ahead and make the comment now, is when I first became a member of this council and the water board, had a wise man tell me, when I asked him what he worries about the most, he said, "Infrastructure does not improve with age."
I agree, but my problem is.
Let me finish, please. He brought up the pothole thing about Nineteenth Street. And there's, there's several areas throughout the city that have been dug up, okay? When a waterline breaks, when a sewer goes bad, we have to dig up the street, and then that has to be patched, okay? And there's been a lot of that happen since I've been on this council. The other thing that we have going on currently, and it's just actually starting, is we're replacing, um, lead and galvanize and copper water lines throughout the city. We're in phase one, there'll be two hundred and, no, excuse me, three hundred and thirty-four, is that right, Mayor?
Two hundred and sixty-four.
Three hundred and sixty-four.
Two hundred and sixty-four.
Two hundred and sixty-four, okay.
Or fifty-four. You got me saying the wrong numbers now, Larry?
Two fifty-four in the first round.
Yeah, first round was.
Two hundred and fifty-four in the first round, okay? When, when they do that, most of them require digging up the, um.
Main lines.
The main line.
With the asphalt.
Okay, so this is gonna require a path. We're in phase one. I think we're gonna be implementing phase two in the next year or two, which will be another two hundred and eighty-five, is that correct?
I, I don't remember that number.
So, over that period of time, there'll be in excess of five hundred that we dug up the street, some of them freshly paved, those will have to be repaired. That money has to come.
Okay, it should come from the water department then, because the water department's the one that dug it up, not the road department.
That's right.
But you pay your water bill.
Yeah, and I've paid it for five years, so that should be coming into that, and so is everybody in here that paid their water bill. You know, if I, I have a roof leak, and I've lived in that house for ten years, and I gotta pay for a new roof, well, guess what? That comes out of my own pocket, that's part of it. It's the same thing.
The city only has revenue, the state controls every bit of revenue that the city can generate. We can't just pass a tax, we can't just go implement a tax or something to generate money. The state controls all of that, they control property taxes we receive, they control, like, this tax, it's all controlled by the state. And in fact, the mayor didn't talk about this, but I'll talk about it. What started this whole discussion is that during the state budget negotiations, Public Law one seventy-three was passed, House and Road Act fourteen sixty-one, I think, which the governor and the state legislators, those people that the mayor thinks you could change their mind, looked for ways to cut the state budget. So, they took money out of the community crossings program and other areas of the budgets and say, oh, it said, okay, let's give the cities the ability to pass a tax, so that they can collect that money, and blame it on the cities, okay? So, I mean, the state controls everything that we do. And then made us tax you in order to get some money back.
Well, our, our levy's increasing the normal four percent this year, right? Our max levy? So, that shouldn't affect it.
Your max levy's only going up four percent this year, that's all it's allowed to go up.
Is that what it was last year?
That's what it was last year, that's the max. It'll bring in a little over a, I think it's like a hundred and nineteen thousand new dollars to the city general fund.
I'm sorry, let, let me, let me redirect here, cause we're, we're at the public hearing phase, let's, let's let the public speak, and then the council can debate this. I'm sorry, sir, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, you're fine, I just, I said what I had to say, and I.
For the sake of all of us, me and everybody here, I'm sure we would like this to be brief and to the point, so let's get back to the point, okay?
Any other public comments before we close the public comments section and move on to the actual new business? No, thank you.
Naomi Holloway, eleven thirty-nine Twelfth Street.
Can you speak up, please?
Naomi Holloway, eleven thirty-nine Twelfth Street. So, to start off, I have three vehicles, one of them is commercial, so that would impact me raising that or adding that tax. me raising that or adding that tax. And you think at the end of the year, you know, that's not much, if you save up or whatever, but when you don't have a lot of money, then that bill comes up and you're like, "Oh crap, I have to pay that next week." You know, well, what part of your household are you going to take from, for that additional 125, 140 dollars? You know, it doesn't seem like a lot until you have to take it from a paycheck. So, my thought was, like the gentleman back here said, to find a different way to come up with that money. You know, we have a beautiful riverfront that could have festivals and food trucks and, you know, even if it was just once a month, have people down there, vendors, I'm from Florida, and every inch of water down there is utilized to make money, you know? And then, if you're not allowed by law to put that in to wherever the money needs to be, put it in the general fund, because you said you can use that money to do those things. So instead of taking from people who are already depleted, maybe bring people in who can help to add more money to our community.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Start with you and end with you, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Maybe?
I just want to thank you.
He just likes.
I just want to publicly, Greg Jarboe, 739 17th Street, Telsi, Indiana. I just want to thank you for your option, because I think it's, it's a brilliant thing to do, it's a brilliant thing to go back to legislation and tell them.
Don't call me brilliant, you're making my head big.
Well, no, I'm just, I don't want to make your head big, I promise you, but I just want to, I just want to say that that's, to me, that's a very viable option, especially since you've got a year to try to do it. And I hope you guys listen to the mayor and take his, take his advice on it, and, and I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mayor, but he gave us a great option. And if we can draft a petition and put it online for us, I'm sure there's a lot of people that would sign that petition to try to change that legislation.
I can get a.
And hopefully, we're not the only city to do it, right?
Well, yeah.
But I just want to thank you for the option. If, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but just thinking about options is a fabulous thing, and I appreciate that, so.
That's my job. Andy, oh, that was the last one, sorry, Andy?
Andy Hicks, Telsi Electric Gender Manager. Just a couple of comments tonight that I just wanted to come here and clear up, has nothing to do with the wheel tax, that's on y'all, but that's not on me. As far as electric rates, kilowatt hour, per cost per kilowatt hour has gone down since I came here September 2021. We have not had a rate increase. This past year.
That's a fact.
That's a fact. And now, hey, your bill's going up, possible, come talk to me. We've got tools to help you conserve my meter, I just wanted to put that out there. From last year to this, this year, I actually did a map today, 3.8% decrease overall bill. I can also show you that, cost per kilowatt hour. Second thing, it's kind of floated out there, I've talked to some individuals, anytime there are ever questions, feel free to call me at the office, reach out, I'm glad to meet you. Telsi Electric did not pay for the sports complex. Did not. There's an article that's out there, it is false, I've reached out to them, they've actually told me they're going to correct that article. Telsi Electric took funding into that sports complex, no different than what we do any other customer upgrading their facility. Bottom line.
Thank you.
I've got the data to back that up.
Would want to say it, please.
Yeah, come to the office.
I sure will.
Yeah. But Telsi Electric did not pay millions of dollars to that sport complex, absolutely not. Our funds are restricted, they had to go for infrastructure upgrade, that's what we did, we upgraded the high voltage side of that electrical system, it's the man-hours for the lights. Steve's here, he can, he can vouch for that as well.
Can you supply man-hours?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's the one way, so you address that, the man-hours, that's one way we give back to the community. That's really the only way we got to give back to the community because of our funds are restricted, so we can't just donate money.
Can you do that?
No, we don't. We don't just donate money to them, no, ma'am.
I'm, I'm sorry, Andy, I'm sorry, this is about the wheel.
I know, I know, I just want to address that.
Thank you.
I sent that out to y'all, it's a lot of rumors out there, you hear, come talk to me, I can show it, sorry to take up your time.
All right, I promise you, Andy is accessible, you call him, he takes your calls.
Any other comments from the public before we close the hearing?
Do you know you want to hear from me?
Well, I was wondering, it's good to see you, Ron.
I haven't been here for a while.
I know, I've missed you.
My name's Ron Ford, 344 12th Street. I mean, there's, there's a lot to think about on everything, a lot of different ways you can look at it, I know. I'm afraid that I'm going to get hit with, in Cannleton as well as Telsi, you know, I don't know if they can do that.
Cannleton cannot.
But I got, I know a lot of people that also have trailers, boats and stuff like that, and I myself, you know, trailers, whatever, I'm retired, you know, fixed income, but what I really want to say is, I want to know that we can put our trust in you to fight for us, for once, okay? We want, we want to see you fighting for us. I know there's people up here that will not fight for us, but they want, you know, you know, things done under, while they're, while they're behind that bench, they want to put their projects, you know, another project under their belt. We just want you to, you know, people utilize Facebook, the newspapers are almost obsolete, you, I know.
And I look to her like, kind of the front row there, just be careful.
But anyways, no, I mean, if you get on Facebook, or, you know, I mean, you know how to communicate, okay? You do know how to communicate. Can you get us the numbers, you said you would, you'd get us the numbers, can you give us a, a frequent update on, you know, how to fight this, how to fight this? Because, you know, I mean, our, my bills do keep going up, my electric, or maybe the electric didn't, I did not see it, and I can honestly say that I might have seen a decrease, because I do not, I don't, I have a very low electric, so it's kind of hard to say. But all my other bills are going up, so I mean, we, I just want to know that we can put our trust, or.
Excuse me.
In you to do the right thing, to communicate with us, okay? You know how to communicate with us and everything.
Well, what it's going to take, Ron, you know, I've got to draft something to even send to the legislator to consider before, you know, I just don't know, I can have a small talk with them, but I think getting your ducks together and getting a formal letter or something to send to them, and then ask for support.
But like this lady said, you know, I, I, I've got 25 years down in Florida, on the beach, they utilize that beach for the income. I mean, we have a beautiful riverfront, you know, I mean, anybody that's ever, you know, been excited about a sunset can go down there and just, you know, I mean, it's like watching a fireplace, you know, you can just, you lose all, you know, stress, you know? And I mean, we're, we're not utilizing that, we could, and maybe that would help, you know, keep our bills down, you know? It would be nice for once to see all the bills go down, all the taxes go down, you know, they just keep going up and up, and I'm not going to complain about the groceries, because I think that's a whole different bottle of wax that they're hiding, okay? Why the grocery thing's going up, it's not the tariffs, okay? But other than that, that's all I wanted to see or say, that I would like to see you have our best side and try to get this taken care of, keep us informed on what you're going to do, and then hopefully people will come together and try to utilize the river or something, the towns, it's, it's nice to see the Behind the Time Bakery, had a car show and everything, I don't know how that helped. It might have helped the business, I really don't know how it helped the town, if it did help the town, you know?
Well, it's a quality of life thing, it did help people, people get something to do. Some people love cars and some don't, but it gave them that option to go see what they wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Any other public comments? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the council meeting?
Motion to close.
Motion by Gerald, second by.
Second.
Mike, or, Mike, I'm sorry, Brian. All in favor, stick up, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, all right, meeting reconvened. Next item on the agenda is the new business, item eight, wheel tax and excise surtax. So council, the floor is yours for a discussion of what you want to do. Jeff does have a copy of a draft ordinance, which, you know, there's no numbers in there, and they don't even have to do anything with it, it's just there, okay?
Proposed ordinance based upon forms that were provided by another municipality.
Yeah, I don't want to get excited because there's one up here, but that's.
I don't want, I don't want to take credit for doing something unique, I, I joke all the time that I pay somebody else to do my taxes, so I use somebody else's ordinance to draft this one.
What's the proper procedure, Mayor, do we?
Well, I.
Or, I've got a number of comments.
I think what I, it's the council's decision, I don't know, I think first have some discussion before you even consider reading anything, but be.
Okay.
But be the most appropriate thing to do, because you may make some comments or everybody, and they decide there's no sense in reading it, shred it and go on, but I don't want to, I feel like that might be the cart for the horse thing.
I've got some comments, and there's some other ones.
Well, you're, so are that end table, we can go down?
Just take a second. Okay. Mike, I'm having trouble convincing myself that we can appeal to the governor and the supermajority to amend, make any changes that are going to, they, in fact, I have a quote from the governor, quote, "Wheel taxes are going to be something you're going to need to use, because if you don't do that, it's going to be hard," I don't know if it's a threat, "it's going to be hard for the state to partner up in places that need even more of their own roads."
Yeah. The good thing is, how he said that.
Please, Mayor.
Well, we do already have a wheel tax sent to the county, if I could just get the legislative changed where that's good enough, they're all right.
Who's going to change it, though? The supermajority?
You know, I, I, I feel there, there's a lot of municipalities that's going to be going through this, and they're feeling the same pressures and heat that we are, and I think that, I don't know, maybe not, but it's, what do we have to lose at this point other than if we implement it now, there's ex, you know, depending on what rates adopted that we lose out on? We don't gain any more additional excise, not excise, the lane distribution funds by doing it now, the only thing we lose out on is that tax, which I'd rather, I'd rather roll that dice and try to get it changed before implementing it. I don't know.
May I make some comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, yeah, yeah.
Well, you talked about how much has been generated and stuff, but one of the things I wanted to stress is that alleys cannot be paved under, with community crossing fines.
That's correct.
I'm, it's a question of mine, I don't believe alleys can be paved under these local wheel tax.
While you're talking, I'm going to look that up, I got, I don't know if it's going to be in this power point or not, I don't think it is at all.
What I saw, I, I looked through that power point and I thought it said they could only use on roads and streams, I didn't see alley mention.
No, okay.
But, no. But anyway, so, the, and, and there were several comments made, and Ron made one about, and a couple of people did, about utilizing the riverfront to create some festivals and income and et cetera, and that's a great idea, it's a great idea. And I've been on this council for nearly six years, and when I came on the council, one of the things that I was interested in seeing done is to create a boat ramp arena at Sunset Park, because the existing ramp is not functional. That's in the city's plan to do that, we still haven't come up with money to do that. So, I don't know where that money's going to come from, okay? I agree with you, it's a great idea, Ron. Well, if I could speak, I would love to. Pardon me? If I could speak, I would love to. Well, the general funds can be used to do anything the city needs, including paving One of the things that I wanted to review, and some of this has probably been discussed already, is that on the, on the website, under this, there were some frequently asked questions, and some of these I think we've already covered, but it says, "The county has LOHAT, that's the acronym for this tax, in place, does that automatically qualify the municipalities in that county to be eligible for the lane mile direct distribution?" The answer is no. Each eligible, each eligible unit must adopt LOHAT to qualify for the lane mile direct distribution. So, question two, if a municipality adopts LOHAT, do they still receive distributions from a county LOHAT? Answer, yes, current law treats county LOHAT and municipal LOHAT separately. Question, would a vehicle pay both a county LOHAT and a municipal LOHAT? Yes, current law treats county LOHAT and municipal LOHAT separately. A resident in a municipality with a wheel tax, excise, surtax, would pay the appropriate municipal LOHAT fee in addition to the appropriate county LOHAT fee? But for those of you who noticed, at least one in the audience who live in the county and are residents of Telsi, you would not pay the city LOHAT tax, is that correct?
Absolutely. That's correct, yeah. And neither would anybody in Cannleton or Troy, they're ineligible to even implement it.
Question, would a vehicle pay both a wheel tax and excise surtax? No, wheel taxes and excise surtaxes apply to different types of vehicles. No vehicle would pay both a wheel tax and an excise surtax. And just to give you an end, if I'm boring you, I apologize, but I think it's important to stick with the facts. The wheel tax, excuse me, the excise surtax applies to passenger vehicles, trucks, I always get this attribute, trucks less than 11,000 pounds.
Correct. Yeah, that arrow, I don't know if you're looking at it.
Yeah, motorcycles, motor-driven cycles, trailers, permanent new trailers, permanent renewal, trailers less than or equal to 3,000 pounds, and trailer less than or equal to 9,000 pounds, would pay the excise surtax, that minimum being 750, the maximum being 25. Are the rates to be established anywhere in between those?
And for most people, Larry, people probably have this room, they don't even know what, how much their vehicle weighs, I mean, who knows that, I mean?
I don't.
No.
And, on the wheel tax, just to, just to give you an example of what we're talking about here, that's on the surtax. On the wheel tax, on a surtax, they estimate, the state estimates that would apply to 7,962 registrations in Telsi, okay? That's the tax that's 750 to 25. On the wheel tax, the state estimates that applies to 292 vehicles. That's the, that's the five, the quarter dollar range. But that only apply, I mean, so, by and large, we're talking about the excise surtax, okay? We have, we have a number of future projects, and I try to put all of this in perspective on the council, everything that we do with, and try, and I know the mayor does also, and all the council members do this, but we need to balance this with everything that's going on in the city, and what we're going to need funds for. So, we have some future projects, which are very important to the city. One of them being the sidewalk on Highway 66, on the east side of Highway 66, from Washington Street to William Tell Boulevard. That is scheduled to go out for bid sometime, I think within the next six months, Chris, is that right?
Early next year.
Okay. The city has to match those funds, that's a federal, state, local matching program. But the city also had to, in order to get that project approved, commit to building a sidewalk from Highway 66 along William Tell Boulevard to Zurich Way. a sidewalk from Highway 66 along Williamtown Boulevard to Zurich Way, the city has to build that at their own expense, as part of the matching funds for the whole project, okay? Those funds have to come from somewhere. I mentioned, we're currently underway with the lead in galvanized and copper waterline replacements, being replaced throughout the city, and I had 354 this round, does that sound right?
254.
Okay, whatever it is, um, but, uh, and, and hopefully we'll have funds, um, available to, to meet those needs, but we, it's kind of an ongoing project, and you never know what you're getting into when you dig up the waterline. Another project that's been approved, thanks to the mayor's good work, is Tale Street, a streetscape project, again, it's a federal, state, local matching program, um, not sure what fiscal year that's scheduled in, but that will involve paving of Tale Street from 12th to Main, new sidewalks-
You know, paving is additional.
Paving is additional.
That, that's not part of that.
I stand corrected, so we'll have to come up with money.
Well, that's, yeah, okay, community crossings, money, I'm probably gonna apply for it, but, grant money, stretch as far as you can.
Okay, so it includes new sidewalks and streetlights and, and, uh, from Main to 12th Street. Additionally, and I don't know if this project is official and whether it requires any city matching funds, but, um, I, I think, Mary, you told me the Endot is looking at installing sidewalks on Highway 37 from Main Street to 12th Street, um, is that a matching program or is that all their money?
All their, has nothing to do with us.
Okay, that's good.
That's rare.
Other than it occurred in the city, you know, in some input, but no.
Okay. Um, it's important, I think, for the city to have safe and well-maintained streets and We just had a meeting, Brian and I serve on the plant commission, uh, just had a meeting last Thursday-
Next day.
Uh, to get an update on a new motel that's been talked about for years, um, the developer was with us, and, um, he told us the update, that, um, an 80-room hotel will be under construction within, hopefully, the next few months, and is scheduled, his completion schedule calls for it to be complete by January of '27. Uh, that'll bring jobs to Talcity, and it will bring extra business to the restaurants and the retail shops in Talcity. And, and I mentioned this earlier, and I guess this is, to some extent, um, a summary point for me, and, and a principal reason why I think the city should adopt this tax. Now, the amount of that tax, uh, to be frank, when I came to this meeting, I was prepared to recommend the maximum. I'm, I'm able to, um, go with the minimum tax, to at least establish it and to start the process of generating some money, but, and the reason being, and, and, and Mayor, I agree with you, if we can get the general assembly to change their mind, great, so be it, I don't have as much faith in those folks as you do.
I got a room full of people, ready to march with me, hopefully, Pat's gonna lead to pack them.
And, and they don't vote, they only vote, there's two people-
Yeah.
-that represent us in the hun- out of 150, okay?
If you don't speak up, you're never heard.
Excuse me?
If you don't speak up, you're never heard.
Well, that, that's true, Greg, that's true, very true.
To me, it's worth a shot, I'll try anything to figure it out.
But here's the key to me, if we adopt this tax, the city controls its own destiny. If we don't, we're giving it to the state, that's the key, and I think we should determine our own destiny as much as we can. Another thing that, and it doesn't have anything to do with streets and roads, but it has an impact on city budgets, and Mayor, you know, we've talked about this time and time and time again, the sidewalks, new sidewalks, and I'll give you, I'll give you an example, it just happened to me during Switzer Fest, just a brief example, I was driving down Franklin Street, um, the hill there, by the Talcity Historical Society Museum, and I saw two ladies pushing, an older lady in a wheelchair up the hill of Franklin Street, so I pulled my truck over and I went over and asked them if they could use some help, and they, "Oh, we can make it, we can make it," and I said, "No, I'll help you," so I helped push the wheelchair up the street, we get to the curb, there's no handicap curb cut there, so we get over that curb, across the street, there's no handicap curb cut across the street either, on either curb, on Franklin or High Street. We've got sidewalks all over the city that have been uprooted by trees, that are almost impassable, and we need to improve that, and that takes money.
It does.
It takes money, I know paving funds can't be used for it, but if we've got these paving funds to use for match, maybe we can use our edit funds or our general funds to repair some sidewalks or to pave some alleys.
When you're talking about the ramps, just so people know, we do have an ADA, it's an ADA transition plan, and it does identify, like you call those deficiencies and so forth, and we have made improvements from some of them, it's just, there's a lot of them, and, you know, you just gotta, I guess it's a pace, not a race, kinda thing, do a few a year if you can and go from there, it's the best you can do, it's like paving streets, bad enough money, I'd have paved them all at once, then dump them, you know, you start somewhere.
Okay, I, I just, um, I think we should adopt the tax and-
No tax.
I'm, uh, flexible on the amount of tax, but I think we should adopt it.
Okay.
Sort of, the city can control its own future, to some extent.
Some, some of the comments tonight have implied that it's you guys against us, we're, we're paying, you know, if, if we pass this and I have to pay $25 a veh- a vehicle just like you, it's not, oh boy, I'm getting them, I'm paying $50, investing it in you and me, it's, it's your roads and sidewalks, if you wanna let them go to pot, no pun intended, you know, we'll, we'll just not pass it or go minimum 15, I, I don't see any difference between 15, 15's gonna make you mad, 25, we may as well just make it 25, I think, $25 added to my registration, I can, I can handle it, I don't know about the rest of you, but in, in the interest of our, our road, these nice wide streets we have, we're gonna let them go to pot, over $25 registration fee.
And then go to pot.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill, it's going down the line.
Yeah, just go down the line, uh, it's, it's, it's like, almost everything's gone up except electricity, uh, but, uh- But, uh, uh, it's, it's 10 here, 20 here, or 10 here, $20 there, and it, it all does add up, I'd say just wait a year, see what some more analysis does, and see if we can't maybe cut something or freeze some spending and, and, uh-
You can say that.
Oh, I have some ideas, if you wanna know.
I have a few.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
Well, thank you, Phil. Mr. Sting, Brian?
Well, I, uh, I kinda look at it a lot of different ways, and I've, I've been accused of being a half this, half that, and my opinion is, is I work for my ward, I work for my people in my ward, if my people tell me in the ward what they want, then I usually try to work for them, that's who my, that's who votes for me, and that's what I'm gonna do, is follow the people, what they want me to do, okay? Now, here's the deal, I lived through a wheel tax when I lived in Southern Illinois 30-some years ago, and I'll be honest with you, it didn't do us a damn bit of good in that little town I lived in, we were a lot like Troy and Hamilton, we didn't get much from the state, and that little tax that we had, I think it was eight or nine dollars, and back then, that was a lot of money, so, you know, it didn't, it didn't do anything for the town, didn't do anything for the people. So, as, as far as I'm concerned, I think we need to work for legislature, they may listen to us, they may not, you guys get on the phone, talk to them, this should've never been brought down to us like this personally, well, I believe, but I, I personally, I personally can't vote for a tax, I'm not going to, and I yield to Gerald Dickman.
Thank you, Mr. Sting. The bottom line is, folks, here it is, Senate Bill One, cut every city's towns' money. The state legislators created this problem and said, "You all fix it if you want to maintain the same amount of money you have to pay." So, we can delay it, try to see what the state legislators do, I don't think they'll change it, I really don't, but the, you know, everybody said, "Well, this and that," it started up in Indianapolis, it didn't start here at this city council, that's the people you need to call up and complain every day, say, "What are you doing to me? Now you're gonna make me do this, now you're gonna make me do that," we're not, they did, they cut our money. We gotta do budget here in a week or so, Connie tells me tonight, "You'd be shocked how much we're gonna have to cut," and I don't know where we're gonna find it, it's just not there.
We're not shocked if we all have to cut, personally.
That's right, but I mean, we, we have X amount of dollars to run this city, and the state's cut us, they cut our general fund, I don't wanna lay off nobody.
Can you hold back on some of the things for another year?
That's a possibility, that's a possibility, yeah, I, I'm just trying to set the record straight, your state legislators is the people you need to pound on, you need to pound on. If we don't pass this tonight, all we lose is $60,000, give or take a few years-
At the minimum, yeah.
That's the minimum we can lose at 750. If we go to max, it's 209,000, Larry, something like that.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's 750 on one and $5 on the second.
You won't pay both, I have people call me every day, "When are you gonna pass my street? When are you gonna pass my alley? Ain't passing the bank got no money, we do with what we got, what can we do? Your utility cuts will be covered by utilities, utility money, as Andy stated, must be used for utilities, that's state statute, so, no, you can't take his money or the water money and go down there and build that sports complex, you can't do that, that's not legal, and I guarantee you, the state board of council will catch that, 'cause we got caught years ago, when I was council president, and they slipped something through and they caught it, and we got rolled up over, so, you have to use what the state statute tells you, so this council needs to make a decision tonight, do we table it for a year and roll the dice, or we pass it? Either way we go, some's gonna be happy, some's not gonna be happy, so that's my comment, the floor's open for motions.
Connie?
No comment.
Connie, is our tax revenue going up for next year?
For next year, the max levy that you can raise is 4%, but due to the Senate Bill One, your, there are different options that everyone is going to get now on their property taxes, which is going to increase the amount of our circuit breaker loss-
Okay.
-from what we were receiving last year.
I figured it was that, okay.
And I don't have those numbers here in front of me, so I don't wanna quote any of those numbers this evening.
Well, they just gave them to you, like, three days ago, so.
Yes, yes, so, yes, so-
If the sucker breaker was coming, it's gonna be bad.
That is, that's what, the way it's looking when I'm working the budgets, yes, but I'm not ready to, to give any numbers or anything, yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
As council president, I'm gonna make a motion-
Okay.
-that we table this for one year, roll the dice, see what happens, and if they don't change it, we're gonna be back here next year asking you to approve it, or we're gonna be, gonna lose that money.
Sixty grand?
$60,000.
We're gonna lose $60,000 by now, I'm willing to do that.
Well, we're not losing-
We're just not gonna get it.
We're not gaining, yeah.
We're not gonna get that extra $60,000.
I just, I don't want people to feel like we're just not, that money's coming out of our checking account.
So I have a motion on the floor, Mayor.
We are losing, you're giving away $60,000 for potentially-
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion made by Gerald, seconded by Brian, any further discussion? All those in favor, if, your motion was tableing it for a year?
One year.
Okay.
Till, till, we see what the legislators gonna do.
Okay.
Gotta give it a chance.
Give them a chance.
Gotta give it a chance.
And if they'll pass it, we'll drop back to where we're at, folks.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Okay.
Sorry, I-
I don't know, I, we're gonna-
Can we do a-
Kind of a roll call-ish?
Yeah, do a roll.
Let's, I didn't say that.
We had aye here, we had aye there, I, I'm sorry, I can't hear everybody.
We have, Gerald was an aye, Brian was a-
Yes.
Uh, yes, or aye, or whatever, Brian?
Yes.
Bill, and, what are-
I was a no, but it's meaningless, we'll all say yes.
Okay, yes, to table it?
Or not.
Okay, so it's all unanimously voted to table it, so we work it.
He, he changed.
No, they voted in favor.
He changed and said aye.
Yeah, so, thank, we're not done yet, we still have a few more little, small things, you are welcome to stay, if you want.
So, make one public comment.
I reckon, you're the newspaper, so I don't know if that makes it any better or worse.
The Talcity Electric Department can come up and defend themselves, I want everybody to know that the Perry County newspaper is here, and we work very hard, and we have grown, we just hired a full-timer, and we have two part-timers, not one now, so, if you have a story, we're here and we are working hard to tell it, so, I just wanted to give that, and I'm here to tell the truth, and I try to keep it unbiased, and I am at pretty much all the events I can be at, so, I just wanna let you know, Perry County News is not obsolete yet, or I would not be in that chair.
Thank you.
All right, that was wonderful, welcome back Perry County News. Last one, if you can-
Okay, real quick, you don't have to have a boat ramp to utilize that space down there, but nothing has to be filled or added, you can start it and then agree the money that you have that, you don't have to have a project down there.
Oh, Cindy, you're, everybody in here riled up.
I'm just one.
Oh, it's, thank you, no, no, no.
Hey, Rob, one quick comment, she's speaking, okay, sorry.
If I may, ma'am, I just wanted to comment on the constant pointing finger at the state legislature, what, what they did, and they saved us taxpayers money by making those cuts, so, so to trickle down and start raising it here is deleting what they've done for us, that's how I view it.
Yeah, well, I hope you don't think that's what I was saying, any-
No, not with, no.
Because I, I was trying to, I'm going about a different manner, that way, but not that way, okay?
I will help you.
I know you will, I know where to get, find your path, all right, so, moving on, item B, dispatch joint meeting date, so, I received an email, I sent an email out to, let's see, so I don't wanna get this bounced, okay, so, last week, I sent an email to Council President Kelly Hardy, uh, I also added Connie, Chief, Senate Chief, Chris Hammack, Gerald as Council President, requesting this joint meeting that we've talked about, um, I did receive an email back from, uh, Chris, and she says, "On behalf of the county council and county commissioner, I'm requesting dates that both of you and your county, uh, excuse me, and your council members are available to meet the week of September the 1st, please let me know dates that work for you, so we can schedule a meeting at the North Annex Chainer," so that's the, um, armory, if that helps anybody remember that's at, um, we, there's two dates that's probably not gonna work best for some of you, September the 1st is Labor Day, and we typically have a city meeting, or do not have a city meeting on Labor Day, 'cause it's always the first- it's always the first Monday, but, so we won't, cities, employees, everybody be off, and I'm sure the counties off too. I don't know.
They are.
So that would move our meeting to September 2nd. Our regular city council board of works meeting, I, I don't know if that would be the best time.
Connie's budget meeting is that night, too.
Yes, and that's Connie's budget. Well, yeah.
We have some other meetings that day during the day off, so Mary.
Yes, we do, don't we?
And I, personally, if you're, I would prefer we didn't do it on Tuesday.
Okay. The third, the third is a possibility. The fourth, I know there was one county council member who said he had another commitment that morning, I think.
September 4th?
September 4th. Well, couldn't that morning. I don't know about that evening. I don't know.
Did that get changed? It's the third.
It's the third. Oh, well, thank you. Okay, I lied. It's the third.
No, yeah. He, he, what he said was his meeting on the fourth is on the third.
So the fourth is available?
The fourth is available.
Okay. So the fourth is available. It'd be an evening meeting, I mean, that's, that's a Thursday. I mean, I don't know everybody's scheduling a Friday, but is the, the fourth, September the fourth, it's a Thursday evening, is that better, good for some, all?
Depends what time you have it.
Well, that's, I think that's what she's asking. Is there a good time in the evening? You want to do 5 o'clock? 6 o'clock? I don't know. And we, we have it at the North Annex, because you need, you gotta think, it's all the county council, and then all the city council, and then Connie and Chris and myself, and I don't know who else, but attorneys. That's a lot of chairs.
5 o'clock would work for me better.
Okay, so...
You're gonna, you're gonna talk numbers, and you want an attorney there? I'm not sure that's a good idea.
Okay.
Well, so September the fourth, at, you said 5:00 PM? Is there another date or time that, if that doesn't work for anyone? Cindy, do you remember that meeting on the third is in the day? It is, right?
It's in the...
So, is the third an even option that evening, the Wednesday, the third? I don't know what all the council, county councils people are, so I want to give some fair dates.
Just for clarification, is this on the 25th or the 26th?
Yes. It's, it is mainly on the 25th, and then to schedule another meeting for the, to address the 26th. Because we'll all be in the room together, we can pick that date then. I've got to get 20, we've got to get 25 squared away before we can...
25 isn't squared away yet, yeah.
Right. I, I think that's the key. If it is for me.
What about 5 on September the, on the...
Third. So, at 5:00 PM on the third or fourth?
You good on that?
Yeah. That's a Wednesday, yeah.
Well, you want two dates. You could do both.
Yeah.
Next day.
Wednesday'd be better for me.
Well, it's got to be advertised. So, that's why we got to get this going.
Forty-eight hours, so it's got to, you can still advertise.
Well, yeah, but I don't, I don't want to take it, you know, hour forty-nine. I want to get it out there.
Yeah.
So, the third or the fourth of September at 5:00 PM, it'd be at the North Annex. I will email Chris. Actually, before I go home, I'll just go ahead and shoot an email, see if she's got it in her inbox first thing in the morning, and she can, I'll see, see Connie too and Jeff, so we can get the legal notice ready, because we'll have to advertise one, too.
Because it's not, we don't have to put it in the, we're not talking about adopting any type of...
It's still a meeting.
It's a meeting, so just public notice.
Right, that's what I meant.
Forty-eight hours, we, we just notify the paper. We don't, we don't have to publish it.
Well, I didn't mean publish. I'm sorry. Well, I meant publish it like, or whatever.
We had, we have to post a notice, and we have to send a notice to the news.
Okay. So, I'll send that to Chris, so, and then see how that works with anybody in the county side.
Once you've got that, I can prepare a, a meeting notice. Yeah.
Okay. All right. And I already kind of said about our meeting September 2nd on the first. We'll put a notice about trash, y'all. Don't worry, that'd be delayed today, so get ready. Always get asked on Facebook. Lighten the mood up a little, come on. All right. All right. Is anything else to come before us? If not, enter a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Gerald, seconded by Brian. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.